Thank you. Well, welcome everyone to the December 1st, 2020 Ogden City Council meeting. And please let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Nadolski, who asked that you please excuse him from the meeting. First of all, I'm going to read the Chair's statement tonight. This is the Council Chair Determination to Hold Electronic Meetings Without an Anchor Location. In accordance with Utah Code 5232074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19. This determination is based on the following. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. The state of Utah has developed the COVID-19 Transmission Index through a collaborative effort among state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry, and business leaders. As of December 1st, 2020, Weaver County was in the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the redevelopment agency, will be held electronically through December 31st, 2020. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting in public hearings, on agenda items designated for input, and during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options: telephonic message at 801-629-158, public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput, or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. This statement is issued and became effective today, December 1st, 2020. Thanks for your patience with that reading. So tonight, we're really honored to welcome, oh, sorry, I guess we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Vice Chair Blair, would you mind doing that?
Glad to. I would ask all those who are joining us to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will stand and do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Now, it's my pleasure to welcome Jeremy Peterson, the Citizen Advisory Committee Chair, to give us a presentation of the Sunset Report. And then Kathy Fuentes is also joining us too. Welcome.
Hi, if I could start, please.
Oh, please.
Okay, this is Kathy Fuentes, Senior Project Coordinator for the Community Development Division. The Community and Economic Development Department's Citizen Advisory Committee has been significant part of the city's HUD Citizen Participation Plan and helps us to fulfill HUD citizen outreach requirements. We're really grateful for our partnership with the CAC and the work they do in reviewing our HUD plans. As you know, they can be kind of dry to read. But we, so we really appreciate the CAC reviewing those plans and we're grateful for their work. The Community and Economic Development Department is requesting that City Council consider for adoption the resolution to reinstate the CAC, the Community and Economic Development Department's Citizen Advisory Committee for the next five years and to appoint CAC members. Jeremy Peterson is the CAC Chair and will be presenting the CAC Sunset Report. Thank you for your time and welcome Jeremy Peterson.
Hey, well, thank you for having me. It's interesting to have a government meeting via Zoom. I've not been to one before, so this is an interesting format. Kathy, they did mention there is going to be a PowerPoint presentation that we were going to flip through. Is that still on the, on the docket or do we have that up to share?
I will check with Brandon. It should be up and running, but.
I can share it from my end. Absolutely. Just give me one second.
Yeah, and this is normal. It would actually happen in a regular meeting too, right? We have to.
Technical problems.
I know, we are all missing the council chambers very much.
Okay, there we go. And do I have control over this or do I just say next when it's time to move on?
If you just want to say next, I can move on to the next one. Thank you.
Okay. Well, as you guys are well aware, we are the Citizens Advisory Committee. We're a ragtag group of eight individuals from the community that help keep the Community Development Department in bounds and moving forward. We, as you're aware, we regularly meet to review what the plan is with the HUD block grant. And then we follow up to see what happens and adjust from time to time and make sure the monies are being allocated according to not only what HUD demands of the city, but also where there is latitude to make sure that those resources are focused in the places that will have the biggest bang for the buck in the community. So let's move on to the next slide there. So well, let's go ahead and move on. Well, actually, I'll evaluate or mention a couple of these. So you know, a lot of the, a lot of what we're reviewing is budget numbers and also reviewing a lot of the programs or subprograms. A lot of it turns into alphabet soup when we're trying to review it. But if you look at the constellation of programs and how everything is coming together, things work together pretty well in moving downtown forward and Ogden City forward and rejuvenating and turning a new leaf on some of the appearance and function of the infrastructure, housing, and business development in the city. One of the most important functions that the Citizens Advisory Committee fulfills is it fulfills HUD's requirement that we have a citizen participation. So without that, there would probably be no block grant. So we're happy to be part of that process. And so let's move on to the next slide if we can. So over the past five years, we have been involved in directing or helping, helping direct about $15 million in block grant. So with the five-year plan coming to a close, we're getting ready to evaluate and push forward on another five-year plan to take us into 2024. The next slide, please. So here you have just kind of some examples of the reports and things that we're looking at and, and kind of an idea of the things we discuss here. Let's go to the next slide. So one of the things that's new and obviously was on everybody's radar was some of the coronavirus monies that were kind of emergency allocated to keep things floating. And the administration was good to reach out to us and ask for our recommendations and what we would do to help facilitate that, that program and those emergency funds. The next slide, please. So here's an example. I guess this kind of just touches on the issues that we discuss, housing, homeownership, community development, and business development. I think the next slide has more specifics on the program. So let's go to the next one. So regarding community development, we have, you'll notice there's two programs here. There's Quality Neighborhoods, which is housing rehab. And then you also have on the right-hand side, Community Housing and Development Organizations or what they call CHODO Housing Projects. Those are two, two similar programs that do kind of the same thing, but there are different strings attached to each of those programs. And so that kind of dictates how the funds are used and sometimes dictates the parameters of projects that are being undertaken by the city. Obviously, we have infill projects like Oak Den and Stone Hill and the Own and Ogden Program, which is big in the realtor community. There's been a lot of first-time homebuyers assisted with that program, very popular, very highly-used program in the city. Also, we've got the emergency repair loans and help loans and also infrastructure improvements have been targeted with these funds. So we move to the next slide. So regarding business development, we've had small business loans. Obviously, during this COVID period, those have been kind of put more to the forefront. We've got special economic development projects, micro enterprise loans. Business Information Center receives funds from us regularly. And we obviously have the Trackline Exchange, which monies were used to help push that project forward as well. Next slide. So if you want to talk numbers, 40 homes have been renovated over the past five years. That's a pretty mighty accomplishment to do. And a lot of these homes were in very substandard condition. And, and you know, I, I would call them C or D-grade properties that the cities picked up. Some of these were HUD homes. Some of these were just homes in the community that needed some TLC to help bring the blight out of the community. Regarding home repair loans, 25 of those loans were issued. With the Own and Ogden Program, almost 250 homeowners were assisted over the past five years. And regularly, this program runs out of funds. It's so popular that if buyers don't get in early after the fiscal year starts, sometimes they'll find themselves short without enough resources to utilize a program. So very popular. And then there's been about almost a mile of sidewalk laid with the block grant funds. The next slide, please. So regarding small business development, you've got 75 full-time equivalent jobs created from the resources allocated to those programs. You've got 19 micro enterprise business owners that have received assistance. The Business Information Center obviously talks to a lot of people and, you know, a lot of entrepreneurs and business owners trying to get a leg up with their work. And so almost 2,600 people there have been served. And, and obviously, we've got a lot of, a lot of development at the track line, stock, old stockyards, a lot of acreage there developed. The next slide. Okay, so for the next, next few years, we're going to be, well, doing more of what we do, which is review plans and make recommendations. And we'll have that, that plan formulated here after our next meeting with assistance of staff. So we're going to want to address community and economic development and the different strategies, right? With the market shifting, the real estate market shifting like it has been, those strategies may change from what they have been a little bit. And it may even be that what we start out with, with this five-year plan may end up changing midstream because of more changes in the, in the housing dynamic. So so that's, I guess, one of the great things about the plan is we can modify it as conditions on the ground change. So we're going to set priorities for the use of HUD funds, obviously dictated by what HUD tells us is their top priorities. And then we'll adapt based on the wiggle room that they give us. And we'll review the budgets. And then obviously periodically, we're going to come back and see what we did, where we need to adjust, where the funds need to be realigned to stay in compliance and also to help achieve new goals or, or existing ones that might be taking too long. And then we're going to identify areas of the city that need our continued attention. So, next slide, please. So finally, our recommendation is that we continue with this advisory committee and that the sunset be extended so that we continue to, to work with the city on these priorities and the programs and to keep citizen involvement there so that we avoid any kind of situation where things might run roughshod over the, over the community. So that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. We certainly appreciate all of your service and the committee service to Ogden City as well. Any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, I've got a question for Jeremy, if I might.
Yeah.
Jeremy, you and I had a chat one time about a concern you had about architectural design fitting the neighborhood.
Yes.
Have you, have you instigated a satisfactory change in that, how that to fit your?
Well, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus.
Well, I don't need to. I said that, but I, but I think you had a valid point, so.
Yes, no, so, so one of the things, what's interesting and, and so I'll just, I guess I'll go on the record saying this is that if you look at the zoning and the construction standards for zoning in the Stone Hill area, the zoning actually calls for very specific construction standards, like types of materials used and those sort of things. And the ironic part is that the development itself appears to not adhere to that standard in the zoning, zoning guidelines. Now, it's new construction. It looks, I mean, it looks nice. It's clean. It's orderly. And it's certainly in addition to the community. But, but I probably, I probably would have done it differently or would have had the, had the design elements of the exteriors modified a bit just to conform to that, to that standard. And so that, that's my, that's my feedback on it. I, I think the, I think Ogden particularly has something unique to offer in the Western United States because we do have, like Ogden actually has the largest number of historic homes, I mean, homes built prior to World War II. We have the largest collection of those west of the Mississippi with the exception of like San Francisco. And so, so it's really this unique historical treasure in the West that we have. And so, so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of an architectural purist in that sense, and I like to see that, that flavor and heritage preserved and also enhanced and added to. I like, I look at a development like 25th Street when it was built out on the block of Lincoln there, Lincoln to Wall Avenue. That development's great because it ties in and imitates the existing architecture that's around it. I mean, it's not a perfect replica because that would be just a burden and expensive to do if you were to recreate the old red brick, you know, from the 1890s. But, but the architectural elements honored and enhanced what 25th Street had to offer. So if, if I had it my way, I would like to see more projects like that move forward in the city. I think Oak Den does that. I think Oak Den honors that architectural heritage. I think there's some other designs, like some Victorian designs, some Tudor-style designs, Art Deco designs that could be implemented or deployed into the city's architectural toolkit in, in building some things. But also the, I think the free market too could do some work there and, and creating that. So, so that's kind of my feedback. I mean, obviously, you know, the Stone Hill development is an enhancement, like it, it has not taken away from the community based on what was there. It was, it was a trade-up from what was there. But you know, and I don't want to make the, I don't want to make good the enemy of perfect, but you know, it could be, it could have been done differently. I think the box forms that the houses have are great. They have got a prairie, they could do prairie school. Or if the roof lines had been vaulted a little taller, you'd have some perfect little Victorians there too. So that's just ornamentation that, you know, it's based on preference and opinion.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that our Citizen Advisory Committee had some, you know, their, their voice had some weight because I think you're valid. And you know, when you're going to do a project anywhere in the city, certainly the surrounding neighbors and residents ought to be able to weigh in and be heard.
Yeah, and, and I, when all that planning was going on, I was extremely preoccupied in another venture I was in a couple of years ago and was, was not as involved in that decision-making process as I, as I would have liked to have been with the other distractions I had.
Well, thanks for your comments.
No, thank you.
Yeah, there are questions for Jeremy. I have one, but I'll wait in case anybody else has one. Not seeing anybody else's box like that, but please interrupt me. So one thing that I know a lot of different constituents have brought to the table around the activity that the city does in this area of community economic or community development is that people are concerned about how when we are taking these properties and creating these new homes, how Ogdenites might benefit from that. I guess in getting access to those homes. And I was really excited. I couldn't find the exact email that Ward actually had pulled a report for me to say, I think it was around 67% of the people that are buying the homes that have been redeveloped are from Ogden City, which I think is a really great number. And I think it would be wonderful to keep tracking that because I feel like that's part of my goal of doing this work is to make sure there's opportunities for people that live here to have access to that wealth building, et cetera, and be a part of the community that way. So I didn't know, you know, if that's something that you guys have talked a lot about as a committee or how you think about the equity issues around who might get displaced that's living in like the really not great quality housing that they're renovating or gets torn down for these other places. That been part of the conversations at all?
So yeah, that actually has been, that has been part of our conversation. The, you know, I've got, I've got my own personal opinions on, on some of this subject. And part of, part of Ogden's, part of the burden that Ogden City carries is that we have a lot of, we have a lot of weight that we carry from bad zoning decisions that were made 50, 60 years ago when, when things were upzoned during the decline of the city. Back in, back in the 50s, the railroads started to shut down. So when the mail carriers started moving to, to airmail rather than to rail, that was basically the death knell for the city economically. And we descended into a 55-year spiral downward until about the year 2000, when the city council and city leaders at the time determined that they needed to pick the city up from its bootstraps and reimagine what the city was going to be. But, but during that time, zoning was, the city was mostly zoned high density, especially in this core. And that door was left wide open during this decline. And so what happened is, is in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, Ogden became a repository for low-income housing, for Section 8 apartments. And it was basically just warehousing, warehousing people that were disadvantaged. And it created this geographic concentration of disadvantaged people. And having lived in this, this neighborhood for 15 years, I can tell you that concentrating disadvantaged people in one location makes them more disadvantaged because the helpless helping the helpless is hopeless. And you just don't have enough resources or enough able-bodied people to help assist those that need resources and, and time and energy from other individuals that are capable of offering that, that effort. And so, so anyway, it's, it's been a little bit of a frustration on my part to watch the, the, the only way I can describe it would be failure of, of the system to be able to lift some of these individuals out of their poverty. Because there is, there is definitely an intergenerational poverty aspect to what's happening in Ogden City. And some of this, well, it, it's a vicious and sad cycle. And I think if, if we were to look at the origins of the poverty, that would be the most heartbreaking part of it. Because a lot of these individuals, if, you know, we just say, well, golly, you just have to make better decisions or whatnot. You know, that, some of that, some of the things that have happened in their lives or the, the situations that they come from, the backgrounds and things, just don't foster that, that success. And so obviously, to get to the housing question of this, these people need a place to live. Everybody needs a place to live. The question is, what's going to be best for, you know, for those individuals? Is congregating all of them in, you know, high-density, high-rises, like a project-type building? Is that going to help them be successful or help them, or help alleviate some of the poverty that they're experiencing? I think history has shown us that that doesn't work, especially in some other metropolitan areas. You know, we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of big apartment buildings here just east of downtown where we have kind of done that and are still doing that. And there's a lot of businesses that make a lot of money pushing this business model forward where it's, you know, they house the indigent and the poor, and they do so on a grand scale. So my opinion is, is that the lower density, a spread-out version of this where we, where you have disadvantaged people or lower-income housing sprinkled throughout the city is a better approach than congregating everything in one area. So, so that's been kind of my, my observation and philosophy on it. If you can put disadvantaged people in a neighborhood with those who are advantaged, you have a healthier neighborhood because you've got the needy that are being lifted by those that have substance. And those that have substance are frankly humbled by the, the experience of mingling and being in the lives of their neighbors who are disadvantaged. And so if you look at the way Ogden's neighborhoods were designed early on, like if you look at Jefferson Avenue, right, Per Avenue, and that was where the porters lived. And you have, you've got big houses and little houses and medium houses kind of sprinkled all together. And everybody from, from the entire socioeconomic demographic back in the day kind of coexisted in the same space and, and made for a healthy community. So that's how I view, you know, the problem and, and kind of see the solution is helping spread things out a little bit and not make it as intense in one particular geographic location.
Great, thanks. I didn't mean to have to give you the whole philosophy, but I really appreciate. No, and I appreciate it. I just didn't want to take that much time. I guess my thought is just, I wonder, you know, if, if those conversations or if tracking of some data around those kinds of things, I know there's lots of data requirements, et cetera. But there might be some additional things that we could look at that would help to highlight, you know, the positives perhaps that are coming at, like I mentioned before, that, you know, there is a high percentage of people from Ogden City that are able to take advantage of these opportunities. I guess to my point too, I, I do feel like sometimes there's a challenge when maybe there's ways to garner resources for a certain area, like we have done for these targeted spaces. And it's kind of based on some of those disparities that we're talking about. But I'm not so sure that the people that are experiencing those disparities are getting the benefit of the resources that are getting here. So I think, I think it's possible that we have some things that we're doing that are really positive in that area. But it is something I've heard people have concern about with Ogden City doing this much development.
Yeah, well, and, and just as a final note, I can tell you, just in the market in general, everybody is suffering right now that because there is a huge influx of people from out of state that are coming in and we're experiencing housing inflation right now. So everything is becoming more expensive. And it's like, I, I've got children, adult children now that I'm looking at them going, okay, where are you going to live in Ogden City? How is that going to work for you? Where do you go? And it seems at the present moment, those opportunities are a lot leaner than they were, you know, even three years ago.
Any other questions or comments?
This is Kathy Fuentes from Community Development Division. Hi. I just wanted to give you the idea that we, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area is exactly what that's for, is to really look at the community as a whole. And one of the things that we did find as we did the research was that And one of the things that we did, uh, find as we did the research was that at one point, we had four or five racially concentrated census tracts of poverty in Ogden, and that has gone down to three. So we do look at that and we're also, you know, sensitive to what's happening to those people when the community is raised up. Of course, we want people to be out of poverty. Um, how do we help? Uh, you know, it's, that is, of course, the challenge is how do you help everyone? So we are making a difference in the community, but of course, there's always a concern for the, the, the poorest of people. How do you help them? So, um, our programs are limited, but we do do the housing rehab that will, is available to low-income people. And then we're also doing the Stone Hill Infill Projects, which are for higher income, which is kind of changing and lifting those communities, um, or at least giving them the direction of getting out of poverty because we're bringing in those income, um, families into those neighborhoods. So, but that's what the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area is all about, is looking at that whole community and what can we do not just to raise people out of poverty, but to help the people that are there. So, um, that's kind of what that plan is about. And it was, it was, uh, it just felt really good to see that we have actually reduced the racially concentrated areas of poverty in our community. So that was, um, really good information to get. So anyway, thank you for listening.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Great. Well, I don't see any other questions. Um, really appreciate your time and effort. Looks like, um,
I have one quick question. How much time do you spend in a month or a year? Or have you calculated about how much time you're volunteering? You meet regularly? I don't know. I guess I'm just asking that.
The, uh, um, you, you mean, how many hours as a CAC we're meeting?
Yes, yes.
You know, we, so our meetings are probably, I'd say they probably run about two hours, um, when we meet. Because we, we'll have our meeting, which is about an hour, and then we have just mingling and talking and, and, uh, talking about some of the ideas that we've had. So about Kathy, how many times? It's maybe two to three times a year.
Yes, I would, yeah, three or, or four if.
Or something, we meet more often. So, so really, it's, it's probably, it's probably ten to fifteen hours. I mean, it's not a huge amount of time, but we have, we, you know, we have, um, milestones and touchpoints, you know, where we pick up where we left off. And, and, uh, you know, with, with our meetings, we're always looking back at what happened and looking forward to where we're at. And kind of just, uh, it's sort of, uh, like realigning the ship and just pointing it in the right direction. It's obviously heading one way and we're just making minor, uh, minor adjustments along the course.
Well, thank you for doing that. Big task for sure.
Thank you. So it looks like we have, um, you know, a proposed ordinance in front of us. If anybody would like to make any motions or if we'd like to have any further discussion about this item.
There, I, I already make a motion if you're ready to accept it.
You bet.
Then I would, uh, move that we, um, adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty-one, um, extending the sunset provision for the Citizens' Advisory Committee to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Stevens to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty-one. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Trabberka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you. And thanks again for your time, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have, um, three items on the common consent. Uh, these are all set in public hearings for December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Now, if there's any other further discussion on these items.
Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt the items on the common consent agenda, which is to set public hearings for each of those to December fifteenth.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Lopez to adopt the common consent. This is a voice vote. On favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That passes. So all of those will be public hearings for December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Next up, we have a public hearing on the utility revenue bond proceeds. We'll invite Lisa Stapp, the City Controller.
Trabberka, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, the ordinance before you for consideration is to recognize the proceeds and, um, activities from a refund, uh, bond refunding the city undertook and closed in July of this, of twenty twenty. Um, the bond itself, uh, had a par amount of forty-six point one million dollars. Um, and in addition to, uh, bonding for additional funds for construction projects in this water, sanitary and storm systems, the city also refunded twenty-one point six million in outstanding bonds. Uh, the activity of refunding, um, resulted in an economic savings of approximately one point eight million for the city over the life of those refunded bonds. And, um, the city was able to get a premium on the sale of these bonds in the amount of, uh, five, just under five point five million dollars. Uh, in the water fund, the appropriation is forty-one point four million, just under forty-one point four million. Of that, twenty million dollars will go into a construction fund for CIP improvements. Um, they're broadly outlined in the, um, uh, slide before you. Uh, seventeen point one in the distribution system, uh, one million in meter replacement. And then some money, uh, towards water projects that also help, um, with the bus rapid transit, uh, improvements in the amount of one point nine million. In the Senate and also in the water fund is where the majority of the, the, the debt that was refunded took place in the amount of twenty-one million dollars. In the sanitary sewer fund, um, the appropriation is for fifteen point one million dollars. Of that fifteen million will go into a, a construction fund. And a hundred and thirty-six thousand is being appropriated for underwriting and issuance costs. In the storm sewer utility, the appropriation is just under nine point seven million. Of that, nine million is going into a construction fund. Um, again, these are broad projects that are listed. Uh, the system improvements, uh, in the amount of seven point three million. River restoration in the amount of half a million. And, uh, storm utility improvements that also go towards the BRT, um, project in the amount of half a million. And then dipstones throughout the city, um, in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand. When the city, um, undertook the refunding, a lot of work went into preparing for the, for, that's preparing for the, the bond. And, um, engineering did a lot of work to project out three years' worth of projects that they would like to accomplish. Um, and we've provided a list of each of those projects. Um, and budgets at this time, you, you know, of course, those are budgets and amounts will change. But, but the idea is the city would go down as far as it could on these lists to complete these projects. Um, and the water, in the water fund, um, they're estimating a total of twenty-three point three million in projects over the next three years. In the storm fund, nine million dollars, which is the amount that was funded to the construction fund in storm. And then in sanitary, um, sixteen point five million, which is, is, um, fifteen million was funded to the construction fund. So, so that's over and above what was funded there. Um, all in all, the total amendment before you for consideration is to appropriate sixty-six two, two hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars to the city budget to recognize the activity for the bond, um, um, proceeds and, and payoff and CIP projects. Any questions?
Thanks, Lisa. Not seeing any questions at this time. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, so we can have, Brandon, if you don't mind, explaining to those who are attending the Zoom meeting, explain to them how they might participate.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, if you would like to participate in this public hearing regarding this item, you can do so by using the raise hand feature found within Zoom. Um, I, to restate that, uh, the, um, the only way that you can participate in these, in this public hearing is if you are joining us via Zoom, by using that feature.
Thank you. I don't see anybody on the phone, so.
Here, I'm not seeing any hands going up and saw like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm not either. Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Lopez to close the public hearing. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
Actually, I'll make a, uh, motion at this time to adopt proposal ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash fifty-seven.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Stevens and a second by Vice Chair Blair to adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-seven. Unless there's more discussion, um, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Trabberka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you all so much. Work on this bond. Great. And next we have a report from the Planning Commission. Uh, we welcome Greg Montgomery from Planning to talk with us about the proposed amendment to allow home-based licensed family care facilities in the R2. And I know the petitioner, um, is invited. I'm not sure if they're on the call, but I will check.
Chair, this is, uh, Glenn from the Council Office. I, I don't see her on the call. Um, I will keep watching out. Um, but, uh, I, I did send her the information and she indicated that she would attend. So I'm not sure, uh, what's happened in the meantime.
Okay, we also did receive the email from her, so we have that information.
Do you want to go ahead and proceed?
Yeah, go ahead, Greg. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, hopefully you can see this on the screen.
We can.
Okay, good. So as mentioned, this is a request to change one of the regulations for, uh, we'll call daycare. Um, presently, we handle childcare in a couple of ways. One is a home occupation, where there are eight or less children that are in a home. That's, uh, primary function is a home. Uh, you, there are no outside employees allowed. Uh, it has to be in a residential zone. And it has to meet our city and state requirements, uh, for that licensing for that type of facility. And we presently have twenty-seven home occupations licensed in the city for childcare. We have another provision. It's called, uh, daycare. And this is where, uh, you have more of a commercial-type establishment going on, uh, larger buildings. Um, or it could be, again, uh, in a home, but you have more than, uh, six children. And so in the zones, it's first allowed as a condition using the R3 and then permitted R4 and R5 and commercial zones. In this type of facility, you can have employees that work at the, at the site. And again, there's certain state and city requirements that regulate the number of children, uh, based on indoor and outdoor spaces and other factors. And meaning, uh, building and fire code requirements. What has been petitioned for is kind of a, a, a space between these two. Uh, not a, not exactly a home occupation because the desire is to have additional employees because you'll have additional children, uh, in the home. But not become a licensed facility where, uh, it really is more of a commercial venture and it's not using a home. And so the proposals for this licensed family childcare, which is a, a, a provision the state allows, and allows up to sixteen children, uh, to be in a, a home facility. And has different standards that are required for, for, uh, health and safety and, and, uh, areas, play areas, certain inspections that take place, uh, to see how the facility is operated, that are handled by the state. And again, these are things that are also, uh, reviewed by, uh, different city departments other than zoning in terms of compliance to building codes and fire codes. Uh, the advocate provided these, uh, this information regarding what type of inspections take place with the licensed family childcare. And as you can see, uh, in addition to inspections, there's, uh, professional training that's required. Um, background checks for those who work in the facility. And, uh, food handlers permits, all those types of things take place. The petitioner had mentioned and provided this to the Planning Commission, why they are making this request because they feel that Ogden needs more quality preschools. And especially more small-scale facilities rather than the larger commercial-type, uh, childcare. And that, uh, these, these are critical for the success of children in learning environment. And also having the licensing requirements that take place creates more accountability that a decent facility is operated. Again, these are some items that the petitioner had shared with the commission of, uh, lower, uh, ratio better qualified professionals, um, in job, job creation for, uh, people involved in early childhood development. And, uh, that in her experience, she's seen people leave Ogden City because we don't have a provision like this in our, in our ordinance. And then she also mentioned that these are the benefits that she sees having this type of facility is for the neighborhood in that during the daytime, when most people are working, there is still someone in the neighborhood and activities going on that can, uh, keep an eye on the rest of the neighborhood. And that positive influence is good for the neighborhood. And then also be able to controlling, um, how people come to the site, uh, pick up and drop off, and, uh, can stay relatively close to, uh, their homes with the children being dropped off. This is, uh, uh, the proposed site. Uh, even though you're not considering a specific site, the petitioner wanted to say this is how their site looks. And, uh, gives you an idea of facilities that they have. The outdoor areas. And when we took this to the Planning Commission, we basically took it with the idea of how is this consistent with the general plan? Uh, again, this encourages the variety of uses to take place in neighborhoods and to help strengthen the community. Uh, it helps, uh, homes be used, uh, and people to stay in their homes by having a business in their home. And the, the public has benefited by having these smaller daycare centers around for their children. In the Planning Commission's consideration, they looked at this new definition of the licensed family childcare and are not considering, considering. And are not considering considering it as a home occupation. So they can't have an outside employee or employees. And this was looked at as being a transition between the single family zones where home occupations take place. And the R three zones where the more commercial type activities take place and allowing this at first to be in R two as a trial and see how it works. And if if it seems to be working without neighborhood impacts. Then possibly in the future to consider other zone areas where this could also take place. Because they want to keep the residential nature of this operation. Rather than have the general standards of daycare of so many parking stalls per child. They are recommending revisions to the parking requirements so that it is really a residential use. And you use the curb side for more of the drop off pickup and not requiring a lot of parking for the children's parents to drop off. But just have the parking for the the people at the home and the employees who will be there all day long. In addition, they talked about the need to set some hours of operation from seven AM to eight PM. And have again fenced areas. The state requires that anyway. But the hours of operation were one of those items the commission talked about. To again, not disrupt the neighborhood but be in tune with the activities take place in the neighborhood. That's why those hours were were selected. Also trying to look at a parent's work work hours that typically exist to accommodate. Then be able to drop or off their children or pick up their children before or after work. We touched on this last time. And just wanted to make make clear and understand that what is being asked today is a zoning amendment to allow a use. As with all uses, there are still requirements that have to meet building and fire codes. And that there are certain fire codes that are triggered by having additional children in the home. And as you saw the letter that came from the applicant, after they learned about this, had Kevin Brown visit the site a few weeks ago. They've met with the contractor and realized that they think it is possible to do the requirements that the fire code would have if their facility was upgraded to this licensed childcare. And so they they don't see that as a deterrent. They think that can work. And in all zoning, there's always these fire and building codes that are separate and apart from any zoning regulation. That no matter what the use is, there are certain codes they have to meet. And it so happens, we discussed this with this work session of how that impacts this license. The planning commission, as they looked at the petition, as they listened to the petitioner. I feel that is appropriate to make a revision to the ordinance. They voted nine to zero to make these changes. Of creating a new definition of creating a land use provision in the R two zones. And setting certain limitations regarding hours of operation, how children are dropped off and picked up, where that occurs. And again, comply with the state and local codes other than the zoning code. So that is the petition and the background on it. Do you have any questions I could answer? I not sure if the petitioner is on yet or not.
I don't see her.
Yeah, I don't either. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Greg, I did have one question about the petitioner's site. As far as drop off goes, you know, they they had a look like a single white driveway. Is are they gonna be blocking each other? You know, the ones dropping off the kid and the one pulls in behind them?
What they would be looking at is just dropping off at the curb.
Okay.
So not going up into the driveway.
I see.
And look at staggering their times of, you know, so many come at this time, so I come at this time, so.
Okay. That's my concern.
So what we're doing here, Greg, is we're just reviewing the change to R two. And there's only about two R twos in the city, aren't there?
Yeah, there's three or four different areas. I think I had showed that on a map. Let me just. Yeah, those those three circled areas are the R twos.
Okay.
That exist right now.
Any other questions or comments? Awesome. Well, thanks so much, Greg. So this item, let's see. This item, we will receive public input if anybody would like to participate. I haven't watched the list closely enough, Brandon. I don't think there's anybody new on the list that we need to explain how to participate, right?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Chair Traburka.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say probably the same thing you might as just um state your name for the record and just use three minutes and it's only about this particular item.
Angel Castillo, the time is yours.
Good evening, councilmembers. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I would like to voice my support for this particular project. I don't know whether or not you are aware of it, but Ogden has a shortage of accessible daycare. I've had conversations with many people, parents from the school board. I'm on the board at Y C C. Our childcare is almost always completely maxed out, so I highly encourage you to do all of the things that Greg had mentioned. That activating the neighborhood and providing quality care in a small intimate environment and approve this. Thank you.
Thanks, Angel. Any other public input on this item? Not seeing any at this time. So be happy to entertain any motions.
Here, I'll make a motion then that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty.
Second. We have a motion by council member higher, a second by council member White to adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Traburka.
Aye, and that passes. Yeah, I agree with Angel about the child. That makes sense that we're offering this other possibility.
I was glad that the petitioner was able to find a way to make that work for hers too, so that was a good thing.
Yeah, and I I just appreciate, yeah, that we're pointing out that this is only one part of how you would get qualified. I don't want to be in charge of figuring out the fire fire code.
This is Glenn from the council office. I'll I'll make sure to reach out to her tomorrow, let her know what your decision was. So she's aware.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks for your continued conversations with her.
Chair, I just want to make a comment too. You know, it I think one of the things that we have realized is that COVID has hit women disproportionately in the day because childcare and a lot of are in service industries where they need to be working and yet there's no childcare. And so I think finding unique ways, not just for this, but for the whole city, is going to be important going forward with childcare. So this is a small step, but I I really appreciate all the work that the planning or planning commission and planning department put into this.
Yes, agreed. Now it's time for public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas about any topic. And as we said before, please be considerate and public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Give and raise your hand in the Zoom meeting if you'd like to participate.
Heath Sato, the time is yours. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hi, pardon me. It's Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I just have two quick things today. One is a heads up that somebody is going around every weekend with a high powered pellet gun and shooting at cars on the street. I just had about a thousand dollars worth of damage done to my brand new car and at least two friends of mine have also had their cars shot up and the Monarch had a window shot out, so be on the lookout for whoever this jerk is. I also saw along twenty-fifth street, I saw a number of places where I saw glass on the street today when I drove down it. So I think this is pretty widespread and it's happened over at least the last two weekends. The other thing was I I I didn't catch the whole work session today on recycling. I I just have a question as to what what exactly we're waiting for. There seems to be some sort of we we want to wait and look at new tech. Is this some tech that no other city has ever used before? That we can't do a Zoom meeting over or ask some people how it's worked out for them? Is this are we going to be guinea pigs for some new tech? I I don't understand why. I mean, it's been almost a year now that the recycling of the entire city has been going into landfills and it's going to be there forever. And I I just, it it's very upsetting that that we're gonna just keep doing that. And so I I would just like a little more clarification about why we can't move forward with anything. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more public comments? If anybody would like to respond to Heath's question. I don't think I can. I don't think I'm qualified to explain the new tech.
You know, you know, I I am not really qualified either. I I guess I could say what I what has been presented, but you know, we haven't vetted it at all because of COVID mostly, but you know, but the idea is there are two companies that are that are presented to the county, their proposal to take our our entire waste stream. And all we have to do is get it to them, then they will process it. However they do that, that's where I get lost. I don't understand the science or the technology. But they propose that they can take that and they're turning it mostly into fuel. It will be a jet fuel or or a diesel fuel. And I guess they can decide how they make that. But they will take out the other recyclables, the steel and the aluminum. And the things that that can't be turned into fuel and they'll recycle them. And that's that was what was proposed. And they they just wanted to make sure that we as a county could guarantee the amount of tonnage to to make their process work. But of course, you know, it would be irresponsible for us to just say, yeah, come in and give it a whirl. So we're we're having to vet that. And and that's that's where the the hang up is. In in reality, if if this works as proposed, it'd be a great thing for the county because we wouldn't have to have a blue and a green bin anymore. And we also wouldn't have to transport very far because they would be inside the county. We just have to get it to them and that's that's all that would have to happen. So from from this council membership perspective, I really hope it's a it's it's got good good rankings when we get to look at it and that we're able to move in that direction. As I think that'll just be a great thing for the county.
You did a great job, council member higher. And I think, yeah, I think some of the concerns I had heard before is just understanding really how it works and what the emissions are. And you know, how is it? How does it impact the environment, et cetera, to make sure it was something that was solid? There's only a couple in works right now, so it is relatively.
We we apparently fit their model because of our size and and whatnot, so that's why they picked us. But yeah, we got to make sure that it does work. I mean, if it doesn't work, it would be a flop.
And the one thing that's appealing to me about it is I I mean, I can't say I'm an expert in this area whatsoever, but my understanding is is that you know, even the things that we would currently send to the recycling company that we're using, some portion of that is not actually getting recycled because it's not being bought anywhere to get recycled. So I think it's really a quandary and I wish that that could be resolved with that particular vendor locally. In the meanwhile, while we figure this out. But again, I think it's also part of the community's responsibility to stop using things that need to be recycled. That would be really great if we could eliminate and use less waste overall. That would help us as well, but I agree with the frustration that nothing's been solved for a while. It's true.
It seems that when Jay McFarley or Jay Louden reported is that the Asian market was drying up. And this may be a resource that we could look into as a possibility, but that's a problem too, is that we don't have a resource to to distribute our waste. If the Asian market is not viable in that aspect there.
True. It's a quandary. Okay, but I'm I'm not sure if Mayor Caldwell would like to make any comments.
Yeah, I would just add to that. This is a project we've been working on for two years. And as I mentioned in the work session, we were planning to send a whole team of people out to look at how that technology worked. And COVID kind of changed all of our plans for that, but we plan to be very aggressive about this and and to figure that out. If people say that the markets died and we're not doing anything about that, we've kept a close eye on the market. And we've been trying to do everything we can, so accusations that we're not caring about recycling and everything else. I I'd just say those are completely inaccurate. The fact that Councilman Hayer said he's been on those meetings and looked into that and has realized that we're pushing it more than anybody else is in the United States in considering one of the most progressive facilities, I think, is representative of how we feel about it. So I I appreciate those comments. I appreciate that Councilman Hayer, you've been in those WACOG meetings. And we've looked at all kinds of different options. That means a lot and and we've appreciated your ability to come in and and talk about that and engage in that conversation. And we'll continue to do that. And and just for the record, I I live with three really liberal ladies at home. And if we weren't doing that, I wouldn't have a soft pillow to sleep on at night. But I'll just say we're doing what we can with all the information we have available right now. And I'm I'm really confident in our public works team and what is available and what the market says. And I have a lot of confidence in them, so we appreciate the work that they're doing. We'll give you all the information we have as it comes available. And then on that, I'll give you my son again. Anybody needs a loner for the Christmas village? Light us up. We'll let you know. And we appreciate everything you're doing. It's been an exceptional year and it really means a lot to us that we've been able to kind of weather this together and we're in a better spot than a lot of communities around us. And I think that's just representative of diligence and focus. And we really appreciate the partnership we have with you all, so thank you all for that.
Thanks, Mayor. May council members like to make comments?
I would like to mention that what he's comments on the shooting. I would like to mention that what he's comments on the shooting out of windows, that's very concerning. I would hope that we would be able to maybe look into that and maybe have a report back what is actually doing there. But in our work session, we had our quarterly report on the fiscal condition of the city. And that report has to do with a lot of effort, not only from our administration, but also our employees, our division, our directors in managing their different areas there. And also, I would make a shout out to our council and our council staff. We're in a better shape than most communities and that's refreshing in this time of the year and in the season that we're in. But it is refreshing to know that everyone is working. This is a team effort in developing the financial landscape of Ogden. The other aspect is that I'm wearing my Ogden Christmas Village sweatshirt. It's $20 and it'll be nice to wear on the winter days. So go down and purchase your sweatshirt there at Christmas Village. You'll enjoy it. The other thing is, is that the other night, I think it was on Friday, we went down and visited the Christmas Village. Jay Louden's department has done an exceptionally job this year. There seems to be more lights. It's bright. It's refreshing. And it just, as I mentioned in our work session, this gives us a feeling and a special sensitivity and needing to this time of the year. And I think we got the best Christmas Village in the state. And it is, a lot of people are enjoying that. They're taking their families down and they're reviewing that. But my hat goes off to Jay Louden and his department and all those who administered those lights on the trees and in the Christmas Village. It's spectacular there. Plus, if you go down Washington Boulevard, we have the lights on the trees. That adds a little more festivity to it. But again, if you're doing your Christmas shopping, shop in Ogden and support our businesses that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Said it all, Doug. I don't know. I'm just teasing. Anybody else have any comments? So ditto on everything Doug just said, basically.
Ditto what Doug said.
I think I'd just like to mention it's Giving Tuesday. So, you know, if there's a not-for-profit or organization that you feel strongly about, today is the day to give them some donations. Because sometimes they have other funders that are doubling your buck. So I would just say that as well. With that, I'm happy to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Hyer, a second by council member Lopez to adjourn. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good week, everybody.